Do you think I should say something? I think I will.
I think, yeah, like many of us, we'll get the weather.
There's a smirky presentation. And somebody has a couple folks who've been recognized.
Sheila, you ready? Counselor, you ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's so nice to see a room full of smiling faces. Thank you for being with us tonight. This is the Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council. If you please could stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilmember Neil was here this afternoon. We had an earlier meeting this afternoon, but he was ill, and we appreciate him coming this afternoon's meeting, and he would hope to come tonight. But I can see he's probably gotten more ill as time has passed, so he is not likely to be with us tonight. Counsel, are there...
Up, up, there he is.
Oh, here he comes.
Even his hair's ruffled. He's dragging it.
He's gonna make it as long as he's gonna make it. And we're glad you're here, Matt. Are there any amendments to the agenda presented to you, Counsel, or can I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We have an approved agenda. Thank you. Counsel, we have a consent agenda consisting of four items: two budget amendments, a minutes approval, and a resolution in support of updating the 2016 Beach and Inlet Management Plan. Are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda, or can I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We have an approved consent agenda. Thank you. First, I'd like to say that we're doing something that is always fun when you're an elected person to do, which is recognizing heroes in our own community tonight. So we're very, very excited to start out with Chief Cole, and I call on him to do our first hero recognition.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It is. It's one of the better things that we enjoy in law enforcement, too. The first presentation I'd like to make is for Sergeant Brinkley. Sergeant Brinkley started with Currituck County Sheriff's Department, so we never held that against him. He started there in March of 2003 as a deputy. He came to the Southern Shores Police Department in 2015, where I'm happy to say he plans to retire. Twelve years with Currituck and ten with the town of Southern Shores for a total of 22 years in law enforcement. And Eric is, he's just what I consider a good old boy, down-to-earth police officer that you would want on your department, because he just, he interacts with, he's a God-fearing, loving Christian, and he's just a good person. So we'd like to congratulate him on his 10 years with the town of Southern Shores.
Thank you, Eric.
There's just certification for appreciation for the 10 years. And this is probably just a toaster or something. Thank you. That's a good picture. Prickin' friends. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our second hero is also one of Chief Cole's finest.
Yes. Austin Brockenson. Give you a little bit of a background with Austin, but first, the first 10 minutes that I had met this gentleman just knew that he was gonna be a good fit, and as before, he, we even really knew him or anything. But forty-some years of law enforcement, you're pretty good at deciding who's gonna fit in. And just from the first 10 minutes that we talked in my office, just the two of us, I knew he had a good heart, and he'd be a very good police officer. Austin Jones, excuse me, he grew up in Camden, North Carolina. Always enjoyed coming to the beach as a kid, enjoys the outdoors. Ever since being a young man, he had a strong drive to pursue law enforcement. After graduating high school, he attended Pitt Community College and then Eastern Carolina University, where he studied criminal justice, which furthered his passion for becoming a police officer. Present tonight, and if I miss anybody, it's his fault, because he gave me a list, and I'm gonna go by that list. But his mother, Heather, is here, who I'm gonna have come up in a second to hold the Bible while we swear him in. His sister, Kalen, his Nana, and Grandad, and two aunts that snuck in, Theresa and Mary Lou. Can we have you come up, Heather? We'll do it right up front here. Austin just recently graduated from the last BLET, the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, Training Academy. And we're just so happy to have him on board. And again, he is not disappointed. Y'all raised a good, good one.
I'll make it easy. Please state your full name. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be established for the government thereof, that you endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that you will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that you will not be influenced in any manner on account or personal bias or prejudice, and that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as a law enforcement officer according to the best of your skills, abilities, and judgment. So help you God. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. A hearty welcome to you, sir. Glad you're, glad you're with us in our community. Our third hero of the night is a very special presentation. Cliff is gonna help me, but Len and Barb Schmitz, would you please come up to the front? Come on up.
Thank you for being here tonight. You know, these guys have been doing something extraordinarily special. I mean, there's better beaches up and down, Cliff tells me. But Ken Wilson says that our better beaches, which is Len and Barb, is the best he's ever seen. So in honor of that, we have this made for you all.
Gotcha. Our last group of heroes is also very special. We're very glad that you all are very well represented this evening, too. If I could have Jenny Collins, please come to the podium. Jenny is our head of the EMS for the Derrick County, and she is our very own Southern Shores resident, and we're very glad that she's with us tonight. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the town council. It is my pleasure, you might have seen some recent press coverage, that we were fortunate that we have a great community here, and we have a group of citizens who saw a story about a resident of Martins Point that donated the funds for us to get a new powered stair chair. We use stair chairs all the time. Most of the homes in the Outer Banks are elevated with plenty of stairs to get in and out of them, much less on the interior of them also. And us with, along with our public safety partners, whether it be fire departments or law enforcement, help us a great deal when we are navigating those stairs and getting a patient in and out for their medical reasons. So I'm gonna ask the crew over here to bring our new powered stair chair up. And because of the information about the first stair chair that we had donated, I got first contacted by Sandy Slates, who's right here behind me. You might recognize her from TV. She did a wonderful interview. Her husband, Robert, is here. And a few days later, I was contacted by, and Carol, I'm gonna, I always slaughter your last name, and I have a Pobbit, so I always slaughter, and I apologize. She contacted me, and she goes, hey, they both independently of each other, said, we saw this press coverage, we'd really like to be able to donate some funds to be able to get one for the Southern Shores EMS station for the unit there. Because within the county, these chairs are very expensive. List price on them is about $20,000 apiece. And while we have stair chairs, the difference in this one and the ones that we have now is there is a motor that powers the treads on them. We have some with treads on them now, but it's just really to help guide the chair. It doesn't power it up or down. And so this particular chair has power to those treads, and it really, the, all the weight is taken off the providers carrying the patient. The, that motor does the work, and the providers are just guiding the patient now. And so, Carol, if you wanna, do you wanna introduce the group that I know that you have sitting beside and, and talk a little bit?
Yeah, I'm Carol LaPobbit, and there are plenty of people here that really couldn't make it, but people that have come to Sarah Monther, President Arlene Arnold, David and Sandy Flyer, Ann Lachner. And this is the son-in-law of one of our other donors, who's happened to be recuperating from hip surgery.
Yeah, and all total, we had about 19 residents that, on their own, donated enough funds that we purchased this particular chair, and it is on one of our units there at Station 4. I'm happy to say, as we go through the county budgeting process, we will be able to purchase these later on, hopefully this year, to be able to replace all of them. But this certainly gives us a head start with this piece of equipment. And there it is there, and I'll ask, it's paramedic Ethan Tac and advanced DMT Molly Greenwood. If you wouldn't mind, just real quickly popping down the tracks and kinda showing them real quick what the, what the chair does?
Yeah, so thank you, guys. People are gonna use this. In some cases, it's a lifesaver, but in most cases, we're not. Definitely a huge advantage for the existing people we're using. Like Keith has said, it's electric hours, so if somebody's going upstairs or downstairs, it does carry a lot of weight, so it has a very high weight capacity. We can put patients in it, travel upstairs. Previously, Bill Siswe were using a set of tracks. With this, it's going down very easily. The opposite has not so often the case. So this is a really incredible piece of equipment for us to get our hands on and help you guys with it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's awesome, Mel. Thank you so much. The weight capacity of that chair is 500 pounds for a patient. It folds up and is stored on our units in the same exact footprint of our older ones, which is nice. The new ones, the battery system also is compatible with our current battery system on our power loads structures. So that makes it much easier for us to have that compatibility amongst all that equipment and not having to carry multiple batteries and multiple charging systems and everything else. So we are ecstatic to be able to pull us into our equipment cache that we have now, and thank you for the gracious donation of, and support of our residents here.
Thanks, Jenny. Thank you so much for coming tonight. So this is a big group of people. Those are all of the recogni, there's no more heroes left. Just kidding. So if, if, if you don't wanna stick around for the rest of the meeting, we totally understand. And if, and if that is your preference, now is the time to ski-daddle. Thank you all for coming.
Bye.
I think Len was really surprised.
He was.
What a deal. I think the mayor said to get out.
Yeah, the duck didn't give him a cool carving. All right, as the last of our folks filter out, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda, if that's okay. Next is the staff reports, and we'll start out with our deputy town manager, planning director Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. With respect to January permits, there were a total of 41 permits issued. Those consisted of seven zoning permits, 17 building permits, 16 trade permits, and one lot disturbance stormwater management permit. The total amount of fees that the planning department collected in January was $17,303.58. With respect to code enforcement in January, there were zero warning citations mailed. And I think it was November, told you all about the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update that we've been working on with Derrick County, Currituck County, and all the municipalities in the county. The draft plan has been finalized and has been sent to the state, North Carolina Emergency Management, for their approval. Once the state has approved it, each jurisdiction will move forward with adopting the plan. And once that has taken place, the consultant will send the document to FEMA for certification. The final draft, the final draft of the plan can be found on the project website at www.obx-hmp.com. And then lastly, with respect to our planning board, their regular meeting, their next regular meeting is to be, we're just scheduled for February 19th at 5 o'clock. That is a Wednesday instead of the usual Monday due to holiday on that Monday. But there are currently no agenda items for the board to consider. If something changes, then we'll certainly post a notice in the required time. Any questions?
Hey, Wes, are the, the permit fees in line with what we thought they would be?
Currently, I think we're okay with permit fees. We updated them, I think, two, three years ago.
All right.
Two or three years ago, possibly, but I feel like we're in a good place with our fees compared to everyone else at the moment.
Like you thought they'd be, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, good.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Wes?
Does Brightspeed pay us to be in this town? No fees there, huh?
We don't have any fees in place for that, no, sir.
Oh, darn, okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it. Chief Cole?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council. The muscle report for January 2025. As you can see, we had 1,404 calls for service. The breakdown in the pie chart, let's see, under the incidents, which were actual crimes that were reported, we had six for a total of 10 charges. Under the citations, officers conducted 27 traffic stops, and they handed out seven regular citations, another 19 warning citations. Some of those were for speeding on the, in the area of Juniper. People are tending to try and make up for not getting to go over the bridge. So we're handing out tickets, slow them down a little bit. And we had zero ordinances, and we had three actual reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of January. Just a couple of things, we survived what us upstate New Yorkers call the dusting. The snow, snowy vent, we'll call it. We had seven of us that, that endured it, and some of them had no idea what a snow shovel even is. So they were, they were using what I call, my grandparents was a coal shovel, which is a lot heavier than a snow shovel, but we got through it, and we endured, and the officers did well. We just helped a lot of people that were foolish enough to go out and drive in it. We ended up trying to get them unstuck. We'll be working on the annual report now, and I'm happy to report that we have two interviews this week, and they're for two that are in the academy right now, so keep your fingers crossed and say a prayer. And just a little bit of an update on Corporal Brickhouse, who went through major heart surgery. They've actually allowed him to drive now, so he's, he's actually, he's way ahead of schedule for everything. So we're hopeful for the next couple of months, we may see him back. We'll see. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Cole?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for getting us through Snowbaggins, Southern Shores, 2025. Chief Lindbacher, good to see you, sir.
Mayor, council, good evening. So for the month of January, just a light, light month, but one mobile home fire, one outside fire, which was a kinda unique, it was a generator next to a house, and we were fairly lucky that someone called it in, because there's no one over on the Ocean Boulevard side of the town during this time of year. So luckily, a Duquesne-like guy called it in, because we would've had a house well involved there before anyone noticed it. But Howl Motors very lucky, so, anyway, one excessive heat, one motor vehicle accident, one elevator rescue, which is just removing someone from a stalled elevator, one heated motor, one of our detector services, one assist invalid, one good intent, three alarms, one citizen complaint, two dispatch canceling route, and three cover-up or standby. 25 EMS calls for the month, for a total of 43, and that puts us just a little ahead last year. Last year was 40. And that's, again, typical this time of year for us. So any questions on that?
I think I know who the assisted invalid was.
We have a lot of those, so don't, don't feel like we're picking you up.
It wasn't me, but I do wanna thank the, I don't know how many people in town know that the fire department, one of the, you know, services they provide is to help you get back into your house after you have surgery. And my husband had some hip surgery and would've had a lot of difficulty with the steps going into our house. And the chief and three guys showed up and got him right in with no incident, and it was wonderful. So thank you.
No electric chair at that point.
No power chair.
Yeah, no power chair at that point, but I did wanna just touch briefly upon someone. I had some questions regarding the wildfires and all the incident that happened in California, so I thought I might just briefly, just touch across, maybe try and make people feel a little better about things before they make any type of comparison with us in Los Angeles County. But it is true, we have a lot of wooded area in Southern Shores, and it butts right up to our urban interface, and it butts right to adjoining buildings and docks and things like that. like that. But one thing we don't have are a lot of the challenges that Los Angeles faced. You know, their drought conditions, we're talking months without rain and things like that, really high wind conditions. And typically, on your day-to-day basis, yes, we have some wind here, but nothing that they were expect, nothing that they deal with every day. And, you know, I've heard all the news reports, as I'm sure you have, about there was no water and hydrants and things like that. And I would just caution you to not believe everything here, because whether it's true or not, I can't confirm or deny, not my ship to pilot, but I would tell you this, if we had a major incident here and we opened 10 or 12 hydrants, there's going to be a lot less volume and a lot less pressure coming out of it. Because the hydrants are built for domestic water, for you to take a shower, cook, things like that. It is not built for firefighting, it's just a side note. So that's really, may have been some of the problems, or may not have been, I don't know. I'm just saying, before anyone makes any real type of comparison with that, we should be careful. Now, could this happen here? Of course, y'all know me, I would never say never. But I will tell you, this is an example of one we had last year on May 2nd. And this is a, I would say, a little more than typical of what we normally get, but this was probably a 200 or 300, 200 or 300 area off the sound on North Dogwood. And you can see, that's where it started, obviously, someone was burning some type of debris or, you know, whatever, and you could see the area. And it's, you know, it's not a fast-moving when there's not a lot of wind and doesn't have the terrain to travel. So it's not like we don't face that here, we've had several in the past, and we have the tools. We have, you know, our engines pump and roll, which means we can move or pump the water. We have the forestry pumps, the rakes, chainsaws, everything that they would use. Now, of course, we're not forestry, but we do have mutual aid agreements in place with them, and they were actually on this. So I'm not going to say it would never happen, it has happened, and it's been dealt with and mitigated, just like we do everything else. So I don't know if that makes anybody feel better or worse, but I would say the best advice, and through my forestry contact, is to keep any brush, hardcore, you know, limbs and things like that away from your house, 20, 30, 40 feet, just to keep that buffer around. And any of this information that I'm sharing now, you could find that on the website, firewise, F-I-R-E-W-I-S-E dot org. And basically, it just shows you, you know, and you can go on there and look, it shows you this type of little handy hints, and, you know, different areas around your house you should keep clean. You know, it's fairly simple, common sense stuff, but, you know, if you feel like you want to get a little more educated on the subject, you can pull it right up on the internet of your house, in the privacy of your own home, so. And certainly, if you have any questions, you're always welcome, the fire department, come and ask me, that's fine.
Thank you, Chief.
Hopefully, that makes everybody feel a little better. If not, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, but--
Anybody have any questions for Chief Lindbacher?
Just that, you know, some citizens approached me, and I thought about it in discussions about California wildfires and what happens here if we do have a drought and we get a heavy-duty west wind, what would happen? And I can remember as a kid with the Boy Scouts, we would go out and we would actually, there were fire breaks on the end of Long Island. A lot of the vegetation on the end of Long Island is the same as there is here, and we would clear fire breaks. So, you know, the whole notion of fire breaks in different places, whether we need them or don't need them, you know, people will actually come up and possibly discuss them in case we do have a fire, that things stop at a certain particular point and not continue on, whether they're roads, whether it's, you know, down that little fire trail on North Dogwood or whatever else, something along those lines, just in case. So it was raised, and we thought we'd raise it up here, and I raised it with the mayor, and thank you for addressing it.
Oh, you're welcome. I would say, just a couple of these pictures, she, if you just want to look through, this is, I would say, less than typical of what we normally get, this was a larger brush fire than we normally deal with. But if you slip through, keep going, she. Yeah, this is more your typical, someone threw a cigarette out, you know, that kind of stuff, your mulch fires, that would be a more typical call of what we would get here. And that's not to say it couldn't happen tomorrow, but this is typical of what we've been dealing with, so, all right.
Am I correct that the fire department monitors the risk of fires?
I mean, forestry sends emails out also, so it's, I'm not going to say I'm on there every single day, but yeah, if it's in the middle of summer, we haven't rained for three weeks, then it's a heightened awareness, for sure.
That's my memory, thank you.
And I mean, Kevin also, and Wes also monitor all this when they're issuing burn permits, as do I when they copy me on it. So there's a lot of things in place to hopefully stop something like that from happening, that we can mitigate, you know.
Just educating people about, you know, what's possible and what they can do about it. I mean, I think that's something that we are good at doing, and we continue to be good at doing, so thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to our town manager, Cliff Ogden, hello.
Thank you. First, I wanted to give an update on where we are with the replacement of the culvert on the Trinity Trail Bridge. The project started November 4th with 210 days for completion, so I think we're at about day 90 of the project. You remember the February 15th moratorium deadline for getting work done in the water? We're not going to have any problem meeting that February 15th, just about all the work is done, that has to be done. There's, the vibration has caused some issues and caused some problems. I've talked to several homeowners and asked them to document, and will ask anyone that feels like they may have some damage to their homes because of the project, to document it, and please communicate that to us. But I wanted to show, in this diagram, this is actually from the plans, you can see the, where the sheet pile is going, that was, that was the main crux of getting everything done before the moratorium. And there was quite a lot of that sheet pile that had to go in on both sides. What happens next is, behind that, you'll see the steel piles, and I'll show you a picture, but the next disruption will be the seven H piles that go on, go in on either side of the culvert, and they're what holds the cord slab up. So if you go to the next picture, this is, you can see under, at the bottom, those are the sheet piles that will be covered with the coping, and behind it are where the H piles will go. Now, the H piles, there's 14 of them, I'm told, it'll be loud, because they won't be vibrated, they'll be hammered. So it'll be loud, but we won't have the vibration that we've had because of those sheet piles. And that, this is, standing on top, looking down, and you can see where they removed all the dirt between the sheet piles in the approach to the bridge, that's where the H piles will be driven, and so that's out of the water, and we don't have to worry with that, because had we not made it, and had we not got an extension, that's what you would have seen till September. So thank goodness, they got that done. This is just a picture to show you of the opening, the span's a little bit wider than the culvert was, and you can see they're getting ready to put the H piles in, which I think they'll do next week. If you go to the next one, that kind of shows, this is on the southwest corner, and you can see where the sheet pile ties into the existing bulkhead, and that's the culvert, what's left of it. They wanted to try and get it out in one piece, but as you can see, they were not successful at all trying to get that done. So I feel good about the progress they're making, I feel like they're ahead of schedule, absent the vibration and the inconvenience of folks not, you know, having to reroute I feel good about the next phases of the project, so any questions on the--
No, but whoever fixed the light there at Chickahawke and Highway 12, thanks.
Good.
It's a lot better than it was.
I wanted to also mention, you can't hold Lynn back from planting, he went through, we appropriated about 55 cases, and he went through that by January 17th, he had planted all the grass that we had allocated, so he came back for more. And thankfully, in our beach nourishment fund, we, what we decided was, we would rectify the funding at the end of the year for the capital project ordinance. So he's gotten about 16 more boxes, I think he's going to plant, I think he's planted five of those, he's going to plant some more this weekend, Sunday, and so that's moving right along. The only other thing I wanted to mention, this, we got a request from Allison Flynn, who works for the North Carolina Coastal Federation. She, along with Wildlife Resources and Division of Coastal Management, has, have been running a abandoned dare lake vessel removal program since about 2018. They've, I think, removed 400 vessels and about 3.5 million pounds of marine debris. I think they actually use some commercial fishermen, and when they're not fishing in the off-season, they've just asked for support to try and get a formalized program in place and go before the general assembly. And so, I'm sorry this wasn't on the agenda, that's kind of a short notice, I got this yesterday, and they're asking for one to two weeks, and of course, our support wouldn't have been there if I didn't bring it to you now. And this, it's a lot harder to get a vessel removed than it should be, and this, this program will make it a little bit easier, and, you know, if we ever, God forbid, have an issue, a storm comes through, and all of a sudden, nobody owns these boats, there's that program will help us get these boats out of the water. So if, okay, if, to authorize the mayor to sign this letter, and I'll send it.
So basically, you just need us to nod our heads and say we have consensus that it's okay to support this effort?
Yes.
Okay, I think we got there, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Yeah, who wants to look at a terrible, yucky boat that shouldn't be there in the water? I agree. Okay, thanks, Cliff.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, tonight we have with us Johnny Howell from Philphornville, welcome, Johnny.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything to report at this time?
No report.
Okay. And we had general public comment, I don't know if anyone has signed up? If you have--
We have one.
Mark?
I signed up twice, but I didn't sign for this.
Okay.
Mark LeBlanc, 910th Avenue. I wanted to commend the fire chief on the, on the presentation on the fire. This has been a concern of mine, I'm a Dare County master gardener and teach a course in Firewise USA and fire escaping. And I wanted to say, this is one of the concerns I had about some of the lot clearing ordinances, and whether or not California, some reporting says they dissuade fire breaks, and I wonder whether vacant lots might not serve as fire breaks within the community if the regulations were relaxed on that front. I'd also say that a lot of houses are not in compliance with the guidelines of Firewise USA, particularly the proximity of trees. The Quercus virginiana, the venerable live oak, is one of the most flammable trees, and yet it's admired and up upon houses all over the place. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Good evening, Mayor, town council. My name's Lynn Schmitz, 184 Wax Myrtle Trail. I'm really surprised, thank you very much for the award.
Yay! That was the intent.
Right, yeah. Anyway, I just came to give you a just quick rundown on the beach grass, how we've been doing, just a progress report of how we've been doing this year. We started mid-November, and as of today, we've planted approximately 95,000 sprigs, thanks to all the volunteers, even all the people that came here. Even members of the town council have come out and helped, and just want to say thank you to everyone that has participated, and I really haven't been able, I wouldn't do it without all of, all the volunteers. The turnout has been so good this year that we planted from Pelican Watch all the way up to the cell phone tower in just three months, which I had anticipated would take four months. So because of all the volunteers that came out, instead of, you know, six, seven, eight people, we're getting 17, 20, 25 people come out. So that's why we ran through the grass so fast. So anyway, so, let's see, we've planted about 1.7 miles of dune, and that's, and we have over 350 volunteer hours as of now, and we've planted all the way up to Trout Run. And thanks to the increased funding, I'll now be able to plant four or five more days in February, and hopefully, we'll get that up to two miles of dune planted, which is halfway. And that really sets us up in a really good position to be able to finish planting of the second row of sand fence next year, all the way up to 13th Avenue in the town of Duck. The planting season goes from November to the first week of March, so those extra planting days this year really helped us get us to the halfway mark. Just an announcement, next planting will be the Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday, February 9th. The game doesn't start till 6:00, so we have plenty of time in the afternoon, we're going to start after church, so 1:30 in the afternoon, we're meeting at Dolphin Run in Southern Shores and continue north as far as we can get. I'll have lots of grass that's going to be delivered either Thursday or Friday. Also want to give a big shout out to Shore Coffee Roasters, who has been providing coffee to all the planters for every planting since November. Laura and Matt believe in community service, and they really come through, and we really appreciate it. If you have a chance to stop by the coffee place, it's really good. Always want to thank Barbara for making cookies and supplying the extra energy we needed to plant grass. I have a list of emails and to send out, if you want to be added to that email list, I have a signup sheet in the back. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn.
Any questions?
Appreciate it. Cookies. All right, moving on to new business, council, on page 21, we have public hearing for ZTA 2501, a zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores. And I'm going to hand this public hearing over to our attorney.
All right.
Johnny, thank you.
Well, thank you again, council, for allowing me to be here in place of Mr. Horenthal. You have before you tonight a ZTA for non-conforming lots, and it's a complicated ordinance, I'm going to be completely honest with you. And in 2017, when this ordinance was drafted, the town attorney at that time warned that it was a complicated ordinance to achieve the goals of that then acting council, and warned that it was not perfect, and that there were going to be some concerns that popped up over time. And lo and behold, it did take from 2017 until middle of last year before we really had any kind of issue, but we did learn that we had an issue, and I'll just kind of go briefly, it helps to understand the history over the last several months before I really get into the ordinance, but essentially, what happened is, a property owner here in Southern Shores, Garrison Beach, purchased three lots. There should be a GIS image in your package somewhere that shows lots 43, 44, and 45 on Dolphin Run Road. And if you look at the GIS, you can see that there's a structure that exists on Lot 45. Lots 44 and 43 are adjacent to one another, and they're both non-conforming lots. And Mr. Varnell represents Garrison Beach, at least in this action, and submitted a request for an interpretation from the planning director as to whether or not he would be able to build a single structure on lots 43 and 44 without recombining them with 45. Mr. Haskett and I looked at the request for the interpretation, put our heads together, and ultimately determined, under the current language of the ordinance, it would not be possible to do so. The big reason is, if you look at the old ordinance, there's not a reference to anything but a single lot. There's development that's referenced, but it only talks about a non-conforming single lot, not an adjacent pair of non-conforming single lots, or more than one non-conforming lot. So we looked at that, felt good about our analysis, responded back to it, and we were served with an appeal of our decision, and we looked at the appeal and felt that we probably would have a pretty good chance if we were to litigate it. And we're frankly in a position to move forward with the hearing, and then all of a sudden, we received a second request from Mr. Varnell on behalf, on behalf of the applicant, and that request then looked at whether or not, under the current ordinance that we have right now, could the property owner first build a single structure on Lot 44, and then build a second structure on Lot 43? And the way the ordinance currently works is that the answer to that question, while we didn't respond, we felt that it was a very strong chance that the applicant would probably be able to build on 44 and 43, two separate structures, and still be in compliance with the ordinance. And our understanding is that that was not the intention of the ordinance, the intention of the ordinance was to reduce density and to reduce nonconformities. Well, at that point, we realized that we had a problem, that we had an ordinance which had language that did not necessarily meet the intent, and we knew this was going to happen at some point down the line, we didn't know when it would happen. So we decided to-- know when it would happen. So we decided to reach out to Mr. Varnell and his client, and recognize that there was a concern with this ordinance, and see if they would be willing to work with us to put together a draft ZTA that would address this issue and cure it. And it took some time, a lot of time, to be completely honest with you, to find the narrowest possible exception that we can make without running into any other unintended consequences. And it's always impossible to know whether or not you're going to run into an unintended consequence. But we really try to make this as narrow as possible to avoid any kind of unintended consequences. Essentially, this ZTA creates just one more exception. And as far as we are aware, this current plot of land right here, these three lots, is the only set of lots where this ordinance would apply right now in the town. So we've come up with this ordinance. And if you look in your packet, I'll try to go through this slowly. Please do not hesitate to interrupt me and ask questions. This ordinance is a little bit tricky. But really, we're looking here at Article 3, Section 36-132, Regulation of Structures and Uses Nonconforming. So in my view, it is a lot easier to read this ordinance.
Sorry, page 27, counsel, in your packet. Sorry, go ahead, Johnny.
Oh, no problem at all. I'm glad you pointed that out, because it's important to look at as we talk. But if you look at 36-132, you see there's a subsection A that's entitled Nonconforming Lots of Record. And if you keep reading down, you see there is a subsection A1, Development and Sale of Certain Nonconforming Lots Without Recombination. And then if you look at subsection A2, it says recombination required. So when you're analyzing the ability to develop under this ordinance, it is a lot easier to start with A2 instead of A1. So the first step that you need to take when you're looking at this ordinance is to go down to A2 and to figure out whether or not recombination would be required based on the proposed development. If you start and you look at A2, it says that if any of the following situations apply, all adjacent lots under the same ownership shall be recombined into either A, a single lot, which may or may not meet the minimum requirements for the district in which such lots are located, or 2, multiple lots which all meet the minimum requirements for the district in which such lots are located. So it has A through E in terms of cases where you have to recombine. And in the case of Garrison Beach, it looks like A2A would apply, because development was proposed upon land, which includes one or more nonconforming lots adjacent to one or more other lots under the same ownership. That's what we have here. So we started at A2A, we realized that recombination would be required. So flip back with me now to section A1, Development and Sale of Certain Nonconforming Lots Without Recombination. So the general rule is in A2. The exceptions are in A1. You can see, when you look at this ordinance, there is language that is underlined in A1, and then A1A through D. And there's a whole new section for A1E. So before this ordinance was revised, you didn't have the language in that first paragraph in A1, or 2 or more currently nonconforming adjacent lots as a single development site as described in A1E below. So in other words, under the current version of the ordinance that we still have right now, the exceptions only apply to a single lot, a single nonconforming lot. So we added in the language, or 2 or more currently nonconforming adjacent lots as a single development site as described in subsection A1E below. The underlines under the word single and A through D are just to be abundantly clear that we're referring to single lots in those situations. Those were all there, and the original ordinance are still there right now. The only difference is you have the word single in it now. Really, the new piece of this ordinance is A1E. So again, we know that we have to recombine now because of A2. So we flipped back to A1. And we know that we don't fit under A1A through D, because we're not dealing with development on a single lot. It's multiple lots. So if you look at E, it says at least one or at least one of two or more nonconforming adjacent lots is located adjacent to a single nonconforming lot, under the same ownership, and on which there is located an existing single family dwelling, and the adjacent improved land is made up of no more than two lots, all of which are nonconforming. So that's the new exception that we created. So essentially, I know that's a lot of words. But what this means is that if you're in a situation where you have to recombine under A2, and you want to try to meet that exception in A1E, if you look back up at the GIS image, it fits perfectly. So under A1E, our view is that at least one of the two or more nonconforming adjacent lots is located adjacent to a single nonconforming lot that is under the same ownership. This is 45 I'm talking about, on which there is located an existing single family dwelling, and is made up of no more than two lots, all of which are nonconforming. So none of 45 is not made up of more than two lots, and it is nonconforming. So we fall under that exception here in A1E1. If you look back and pretend that A1E isn't here, look at A1D, just so you understand the predicament that we had. It says, the single lot is located adjacent to land on under the same ownership on which is located an existing single family dwelling, and the adjacent land is made up of no more than two lots, all of which are nonconforming, or a single conforming lot not adjacent to any other land under the same ownership. So under A1D1, technically, there's a very strong chance that the applicant could have come in before this ordinance has changed, and they could have built on 44 under A1D1, and then built on 43 under A1D1. So then you'd have two tiny structures just pushed in really close to each other. So we've tried to make this literally as narrow as possible. Again, we're not aware of any other area in town where there are properties that would fall under A1E1. And frankly, as far as I can understand, each one of the exceptions that were created were for other specific instances. Maybe there was more than one specific instance. But these were all carve out exceptions. So all we're doing is making one more carve out. I know I've done a lot of talking in the last five minutes. So if anybody has any questions, please stop me at this point. I'm happy to answer them.
What's a customary accessory building?
It's defined in your town code. Generally, it's something like a shed. I don't know exactly what the town of Southern Shores ordinance provides for it. It may be something that could have like a bedroom, or not have a bathroom. That may be a better question for Mr. Haskett. He may be more familiar with it.
So you have two structures on a nonconforming lot?
You can, but not two residences.
Okay.
I thought it was a shed. I just didn't know.
And why weren't the lots recombined prior to sale?
So that's a good question. And North Carolina is a buyer beware state. And there's a couple of things, and this is a really important point. So I'm glad you raised it. The biggest concern I have with requiring somebody to recombine their property before they sell it, is that it's an enforcement nightmare for the town. I don't know how you keep track of it. I really don't. I mean, you'd have to have somebody that is monitoring all property transactions that are taking place within the town of Southern Shores.
In this situation, you require a recombination prior to development.
Right. And that's your enforcement mechanism. Exactly.
So why are we going away from that?
Going away from?
From just forcing it to be recombined.
So you could, but then they would be in a position to probably be able to build on 44 and 43.
I see where they can build on the far adjacent. I don't see how they can build on the middle one.
That so if they were to go under A1D1, they would be able to first build on 44. And once they build on 44, they would they would qualify under A1D1 to build on 43.
I don't see how they can, because it would be it needs to be recombined and sale. One lot.
But the sale's already occurred.
Yeah. So they don't get a development permit till they get a recombination plan.
Well, again, he has the property in his hands now. So unless we are to try to sue the seller of the property to enforce it.
Yeah.
Or the buyer, I don't know how. Again, my point is that you're right. Our enforcement mechanism is stopping development by not issuing a permit. But if they qualify for development and can't have a permit issued, then they're free to move forward.
Yeah. But they didn't comply with the ordinance.
That's right.
On the ground.
That's right. Based on the language of the ordinance, there's no compliance there.
But why wouldn't this be better suited as a variance?
That's a good question. I'm not entirely convinced it would meet it for it. Have you looked at it from that angle?
Geography, unique characteristics, existing historic structure?
It may qualify under a variance, but we haven't even been approached with that issue yet. So frankly, it's something that I haven't considered.
If it was done as a variance, could that be applied to other properties in Southern Shores?
No.
Be unique to the situation on the ground for this property.
That's right. Variances are specific.
Because what we're left with, with the two, the two lot combined and then the existing structure lot, is nothing is conforming. Nothing that's been recombined in that scenario is conforming. But I guess where it gets really tricky is there's nothing conforming if you combine all three. There's a problem with our definition of nonconforming.
So we're passing an ordinance, or we're being asked to pass an ordinance that only affects one property in Southern Shores?
As far as we know.
Which is not the preferred method of
I would think it would be a variance.
Of passing ordinances.
For this particular property, it would be a variance application.
I agree that it's definitely not a preferred method. But that's certainly what happened with the exceptions created in A1, A through D. I mean, those, to me, I mean.
No, I understand. But those were to capture everything at that moment in 2017. And the idea was no more, no more small 15-foot setback of 70-foot, 50-foot lot, all that stuff. That was the intention of making this as strict as it was. This was on the planning board at the time. And Chairperson Ward was, I mean, it was a year and a half long process. And the intent was to stop further small lot development. Now, I do think there are outliers out there, and I'm sympathetic to this particular applicant. But I think asking us to change this ordinance for it, I'm not 100% comfortable. I'd rather they come forward with a variance. And they can develop it now with preserving the existing structures in ADU, and put a single story home on earth, a multi-story home on the rest of it.
That's true. But the applicant could also probably build two structures on 44 and 43. And I don't know if that's the town's intention.
No, it's not. But they, in my opinion, the original sentence of the lots weren't recombined. So they need to be recombined for any development permit to be passed.
Absolutely. I mean, I totally understand. You know, from a development standpoint, yes, that's that's the way to force recombinations. Again, though, you know, as far as the sale goes, I just don't know how you monitor that. I don't.
There's not a lot of them. So I mean, this was pretty advertised and aware over the time it was for sale.
Right.
In fact, I think they were instructed to recombine.
Is it appropriate to ask staff to evaluate maintaining the words "and" sale in A1 as we go forward, because of the point that you're making, that trying to enforce something at a sale is very, very difficult?
And we've had some conversations about that. And really, the approach that we've taken is, let's address the problem that we have right now in front of us. And then if we need to circle back, further research the issue, figure out whether or not it would constitute a taking, see what other towns are doing. I know that I've looked at a couple of other towns that are in this area, and their enforcement mechanism is stopping development, not sale. But, you know, our goal was to take care of the pressing issue right now. And then if we need to look at the other issues later, then we'd be happy to do it. But if that's an instruction that's given, that wouldn't be an issue at all. Do you all have any other questions for me? Because at some point, I do need to open this public hearing.
We can go to that. I just I was still the D1 and 2 applying to the two adjacents. I think when Ben worked through this in 17, we looked at the problem. I don't remember exactly what his response was to it. But he didn't think that could happen, the middle lot. We actually had that specific discussion. And he didn't think the middle lot could be permitted. And that, I mean, he may be wrong. But that's where that language ended up where it is.
He, yeah, I really don't know what his analysis was in 2017. I wasn't even practicing law at that point.
Yeah, I got you. Well, shoot, don't say that. Well, I mean, I'm sympathetic to this particular individual. I don't like changing our zoning ordinance. Well, you can open the public hearing. More will come out.
Okay, perfect. Well, at this point, we will open the public hearing, and I will call Mr. Haskett for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hollow. I'm not sure what else I need to expand upon in the staff report. You all have it in your packets. Mr. Hollow has gone through pretty much all the details that I was going to relay to you all in the staff report very thoroughly. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Councilman or Mayor Pretend Neil, I will say that if you remember back to the different scenarios we were addressing, we addressed this last in 2017, 2018, 2019. A1D1, the first scenario that came to my mind was the Ozbahn property and the Brown property, which is across the street from this.
Yeah.
And then there was also Mr. Richard White on Ocean Boulevard.
That was with like L shape touching, and then Richard had the
Brown and Ozbahn were L-shaped like this. And Mr. White owned not adjacent, like parallel to each other. However, I don't recall. I mean, I know Chairperson Ward, he's here with us tonight. He provided, I think, nine pages of sketches of different situations where we had nonconforming lots under same ownership. And included in your packets is one of the pages, one of the sketches that he provided that shows this, these properties. I don't have it here out here with me, but it was
Page 32.
There it is. Yes. So Mr. Chairperson Ward provided that. And it shows 27 and 23 Dolphin Run. But it's also my interpretation that A1D1 would allow for a good chance if they submitted an application to develop 44 first.
Even though it wasn't combined and sale.
That question I have left to the attorneys up until this point as to enforcement of prior to sale.
Well, maybe somebody gets something done, we can't enforce it now?
I can't answer that question.
No, no, I guess I'm asking Johnny.
Yeah, I mean, I can try to answer it to you. I mean, you know, one part of it is the practicality of it. The other part of it, and you know, cautious to go into this too much, because there's not a lot of authority that I've seen on it. But does that constitute a taking? Are you restricting somebody from the right to use their property? You have certain property rights. You know, arguably, one of your property rights might be to sell your property, however you want to do it. You know, if you were to own Lot 45, and you also own Lot 44, and you wanted to develop, maybe not a structure, but something else in it, you may have some value there. You know, maybe it's a garden.
If I sold 20 foot of my property to my neighbor, that property owner would not be able to get a permit, regardless of whether I sold it, the town didn't enforce it, and I subdivided a portion, went down the courthouse and recorded. If they went with a 20-foot lot to go get a building permit, Wes would say, no, you don't get one. You haven't met the standards of this chapter. That's what this is. It hasn't met the standard.
And I agree with you. I guess my point is that building a residence or building a structure is not the only use of property that somebody might find value out of. You know, it's hard to say what the value of a taking would be if this even is a taking. But if you think about, you know, somebody could want to build a garden out back, or somebody could want to, you know, make some other use of their property that's not necessarily a structure or a building. And, you know, it may be considered a taking to restrict somebody from selling their property, you know. Because again, from my point of view.
Yeah, but I mean, that could have, I mean, we have a restriction on bedroom count in town, occupancy. And I mean, there's potential takings everywhere in our zoning code.
Right. But you have authority for those things, though. All I'm saying is, I don't know.
You have authority for minimum lot size and size and scale of the structure on the lot.
You do. But I don't know if that precludes you from selling it. I mean, I think there's a difference between development and sale. Again, you have
Again, I don't see, they can sell it, they just can't get a development permit. That's the way the text looks like to me.
Well, the current ordinance and the amended version would still, it still has language in there that prohibits the sale of nonconforming lots like this, without recombining them.
But Elizabeth's point is, we can't enforce it. What's the point of even having that?
And I think that's a completely fair point.
Andy, what does the planning board think about it? I hate to put you on the spot.
I'll just, I'll finish my comments here.
I'll get to the podium if you want me to.
I would, yeah. If I may, just make a couple more comments. So the intent here is to allow for a single family dwelling to be constructed on two nonconforming lots adjacent to another nonconforming lot with a single family dwelling on it. The planning board, we town staff recommended approval of the ZTA, and the planning board recommended approval of the ZTA at their planning board meeting last week. There was a lot of discussion, and there were concerns with the planning board. And Chairperson Ward, it sounds like he wants to come up here so he can address those for you. If there aren't any questions for me, I'll turn it over to someone else.
All right. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on it. And thank you for the sketch, Andy.
Good to see you, Andy.
Good evening. When we finished this thing up, and we beat on it pretty hard, and Mr. Hollow was more than candid of what we were up against. And I know the mayor was in on in on a good part of the front end of this with the exceptions when she was on the planning board. And we were, at that time, we were just trying to make people whole that kind of got under the fence before we started trying to clamp down on nonconforming issues in town. And those five exceptions that Wes talked about, the White property, the Ozbahn property, the Herd property, the Routen property, they, those were all properties. I don't know the numbers of them, but they were the owners. And we tried to make exceptions because if we didn't, and we had the firm ordinance in place, their property would be unusable. So that's what this is. This is, and Sheila, or can you all, can you turn that sketch of mine 90 degrees from, yeah, swing it the other way? Yeah, great. Yeah, thanks. Good. To me, this is the easiest way to look at it. Lot 45 has the house on it. Lot 43 and 43 and 44 are adjacent nonconforming lots. If we go to a variance situation and let those two 50-foot lots be developed, then we got three dwellings on that property. If we are trying to reduce density, what this ZTA does is it allows for one house to be built on those two 50-foot properties and another house at some point in time. And we had five or six different what-ifs for Mr. Hollow. But to me, a variance would not deliver and would be, you know, another cost to the homeowner for basically what we're trying to do is to carve out and make an exception, just like those other five or six, that is super tight and specific to this property. And we, believe me, that the planning board struggled with it. I mean, I had to call twice to get a motion, and finally ended up making the motion myself. It was seconded, and we voted on it reluctantly, 5-0 to approve.
So you thought this iteration of the ordinance was better than the risk of something where there'd be, end up being three houses on the smaller...
That's right, yeah. So to me, what we've got is the lesser of two equals. And to put somebody through a variance and come out with the same product and quite possibly have two houses built on those two lots when this owner is agreeing to put one house on those two lots, to me, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Anybody? But it was 5-0.
So Andy, if two houses were built on there, it wouldn't conform with the land use plan, then? Or is that vague?
The funny thing is, is when that house gets built on those two lots, they're not, they don't have to be recombined.
It's still two lots.
Until, until 45 sells. And when 45 sells to a different owner, those two lots have to be recombined if they're ever sold.
Or if they ever come to the town for a redevelopment permit.
Right, exactly. Well, it's something that would trigger, you know, to another building permit, say to put a pool in or something like that. Yeah, you're right.
So Andy, this is a little bit more of a asking for your agreement with this statement I'm going to make than a question, but since you're here. And since you and I go way back on this particular issue, there's something I want to say and get it on the record, which is nonconforming lots are, exist in the town of Southern Shores because the town of Southern Shores was plotted by real estate developers. Their goal was to plot as many lots as they could sell. Years later, the town adopted a land use plan that emphasizes lots of things, but some primary points would be, we're primarily a residential town with single-family dwellings on large-ish lots, i.e., we're, we prefer, we want to achieve to the extent that we can, low density. Those two forces are in conflict with each other, and that's why we have to deal with what we have to deal with. Agree?
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, okay. And most people have no idea what this is all about. But, but the goal is to try to achieve, to the extent possible, the balance between private property rights and low density.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what we're trying to do here. The planning board, I watched you all struggle through it, and I was sympathetic. Thank you.
We had to get through a lot of lawurees.
Yes.
And I think that was frustrating to several planning board members. But when you're, when you're narrowing such a focus on one particular property to try to make them feel like they've been treated fairly when we've treated five or six others ahead of them and let them in when we could have said, no, we have a strict interpretation of this ordinance, and you can't come in. So there's, you know, three 50-foot oceanfront properties owned by three siblings. You tell them you can't build on three 50-foot lots on the oceanfront? I mean, it wasn't fair. And we, when you were on the board, we did the best we could by identifying them.
Whatever, whatever we do, whatever y'all do, whatever we do here tonight, there are going to be people who are unhappy.
Sure.
It's just, it's just a fact.
We're doing our job if that's the case.
You cannot please everybody. And this particular issue is even more, you know, lends itself to that. And there's just not a lot we can do about it, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, ironically, that drawing is, you know, old. I mean, it's seven, eight years old.
It is indeed.
Yeah.
And I recognize it today.
I dug into those nine pages of that stuff when we were doing it, and voila, we identified it. We just didn't need to act on it. It sat there and didn't get developed or didn't get sold. And that was something else, Matt, that we were adamant about speaking to our attorney and the, you know, the people that Casey Varnell represents, and kind of admonished both of them to let their clients know that we have an ordinance that says before you sell or transfer nonconforming lots, you have to recombine them. So we, we made it clear to Mr. Varnell and Mr. Hollow that if they're representing somebody that's selling property in Southern Shores, that's the right thing to do. So anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
But there's no, but there's no penalty if they don't re, if they don't recombine them before they sell, is that right?
Enforcement is difficult.
There's no enforcement?
Enforcement is almost impossible.
Why do we even have it, then? If it's a possibility to enforce, okay, I wasn't there.
So on the amendment, or in this ordinance, forgive me for being stuttering in my language, but we've prevented 44 from being developed individually.
We have not prevented 44 from being developed individually.
So we could pass this, and then there's three houses on that property.
You could, but you've got the applicant who's not wanting to do that. He wants to build on 43 and 44 as a single site. And just to go one step further with this, one of the things that we really hashed out at the planning board meeting is, well, why do we still have that exception? If, that would allow 44 and 43. And the unfortunate answer right now is we have a really bad downzoning law that came out of the General Assembly, and they're working on fixing it. But if we were to pull that exception out of this ordinance, all of a sudden, we're kind of walking down the line of downzoning. So that's something that may be able to be pulled out in the future once this correction. And there apparently has been some discussions about accepting municipalities from the new requirements of the downzoning law. And if that does happen, and the town would like for us to go back and look at limiting this, and we'd be happy to do it.
Yes.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Mark LeBlanc, 910th Avenue. I've expressed concerns about the divisive nature of some of these land use amendments. And here you have a tailor-made thing to address one person's situation. And if you look at the history of it, you can see that there were three siblings that must have owned some property, and that was a problem for them. And they were three siblings. They weren't three husband and wife, or three father and son, or situations like that. And they weren't around on September 1st, 2019. So people in the exact same situation, but for these small, little exceptions, get treated differently. That doesn't seem to me to be fair. And fairness, I always say, is going to be decided up the pearly gates, but that doesn't seem fair. I have a question about Section E in the amendment. So if two or more nonconforming adjacent lots are located adjacent to a single nonconforming lot that is under the same ownership, on which there is an existing single-family dwelling, and the adjacent improved land is made up of no more than two lots, all of which are nonconforming, my lot's nonconforming if I buy the lot next to me that's nonconforming? Can I build a house on that lot next to me?
We don't do questions, Mark, sorry.
Okay. Well, that's a question I think should be resolved because there are situations like that that exist. Thank you.
There are a lot of situations like that exist, especially in the avenues, but most of the lots are 98 feet. So if a family owns two or three of them, they actually get caught up in this recombination nonsense, too. So that's what some of this stuff was for. We had, a lot of our lots in town are under 100 feet. I think that's what got missed in 2017, is a lot of them. We don't need to drag this out, though.
Any other public comment tonight?
Would he be able to combine 44 and 43 and make that a conforming lot?
No.
We don't, I just told Mark we don't do questions, and Len comes up and asks a question.
No, but that would make it...
Len, just because you got a nice cutting board does not mean you get an exception on being able to ask questions.
But it's, it would make it a 100-foot lot.
So public comment is public comment, sorry.
But that would make it a 100-foot lot, so.
Sorry, Johnny. I stepped on you for that one.
No problem.
Any other public comment tonight?
As long as it's not a question. Guess we're done.
I guess at this point, we close the hearing?
Yep. Such as it is.
And I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Johnny. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
We have had a lot of discussion. We have had a lot of information put in front of us. I've kind of spoken more than most, me and Matt. Council members, do you have any further discussion about this?
Well, I will admit that this is about as clear as mud to me. I don't know if I'm the only person in the room. Zoning not being my strength, and that's why I have to rely on those people that are more learned in this. I think it's important to be fair to people, and I think it's important that people be able to use their, their property. And I, the mayor is exactly right that Southern Shores was not laid out in a very consistent manner, and that's caused a lot of problems. And I know there are lots of people that own nonconforming lots. So balancing the, the goal of the town and the rights of the property owners is really difficult. But it sounds like the planning board has put in a lot of time on this, and our attorney and Wes have put a lot of time in it. So I'd have to be guided by their opinions, I think, in this.
Rob?
I mean, this is the classic case of individual property rights and, and community concerns. And it's a balancing act between the two. And it's going to go on and on and on and on. But if it was so easy, it wouldn't be in the public sector, it'd be in the private sector. So that's why it comes to boards like this. And once again, I follow what Paula says. A lot of this, to me, is clear as mud. But I think, you know, it looks like it's structured so narrowly that it only applies to these, in essence, three lots. And we have to make other exceptions, in essence, you know, for other nonconforming lots, we may have to. But I think if you want to get to the goal of getting to lower density development in the character of Southern Shores, I'd advocate for it.
Mark?
Well, having been a victim of one of these in one of my nine moves around the country, I do believe in property rights. And I, it's not, there's no easy answer here. There's no, you know, my situation was a buyer beware. So it just one of the moves. So I don't have anything else of substance that offered.
Matt? You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. So, counsel, I think what I need is a, is a motion to approve ZTA 2501 with a direction to staff to give more time and effort to improving and modernizing this section of the code, specifically as it refers to sale of certain nonconforming lots.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all. Thank you, attorneys, staff, and homeowners and property owners. All right, moving on. We go to the cemetery amendment on page 33. This is Town Code Amendment 2501. Cliff?
Yes, ma'am. So we've been talking about the cemetery, about the ordinance that we presented. Staff presented some amendments to you in November, and council elected to take some more time of those. The mayor and Councilwoman Sherlock and I met to talk about some, the intent and what some of these changes might mean. And I won't read through them all, but what we're asking for you all to consider is there's a section in the code, it's on page 35, starts really at line 20. And what it, what it requires is someone who buys a lot has to renew it after 20 years if they haven't used it. It requires them to renew, it requires them to pay $10. And that just seems kind of unnecessary. We couldn't think of a reason why someone would have to do that. Once they buy it, they own it, and it's there. So we're asking that you strike through that language. On page 36, we've, we've listed on page, line 1 and 2, we've listed in the ordinance what the cost is for in-town and out-of-town that could change. And so we really don't need to have that language in the ordinance. We're also asking to be a little bit more direct on the marker placement. And this helps, as Councilwoman Sherlock said, this makes it a little more uniform, and it makes it easier to communicate to the business owners that are out there putting these markers in. It gives them a guideline and direction as how to do that. We also wanted to rewrite the, on page 36, line 21, or starting at 17, rewrite the section that talks about what can be placed. The ordinance as written, it talks about trinkets and toys and shells and unsightly things determined by the town manager in what's unsightly to one may not be to another. So, and it's sensitive. You know, we're talking about things that, in memory, and we just, I think, need to be careful. So what we've proposed to do here is to put the requirement on the owners to maintain their lot... their lot, and the town reserves the right to reasonably remove items noticed deemed damaged or unsightly. And in that case, we're talking about arrangements, probably, that have outlived their usefulness. And so finally down, I've talked about the marker placement. We've asked you to strike items 10, 11, and 12 at the bottom of 37 and top of 38. And these are just items that just weren't necessary. One of, the last one was, no lording shall be allowed in the cemetery. You know, that's a hard, there's probably a lot of lording that goes on by definition in a cemetery, but that's the intent, that's the purpose. So these are the amendments we're asking you all to consider.
Okay, thanks, Cliff. Can I just say there's a typo on line five? The N needs to be struck through rather than underline. So everywhere in here, it should say internment, not internment. Counsel, any questions for Cliff? Or me or Paula?
I think you made it very clear and easy to follow.
Okay.
I think the amendments make a lot of sense.
All right.
Well, and one of the amendments, the prior ordinance said no trinkets, toys, shells, glass jars, tin cans, sand flagpoles are allowed. But if you go to our cemetery, you'll see that they've been allowed, and they are allowed, and that people in this community like to put things on grave sites. And, you know, so I think it was good to get rid of something that we're not enforcing and have never really enforced, but to keep some ownership over that area so that the town can move, remove items that get in the way of maintenance, and that get faded or worn. Not every, I mean, there are beer cans out there, there are fishing lures. I mean, there are all sorts of things that probably no owners intend to have there permanently. And they, it does get messy, and it does get in the way of maintenance. So I think this strikes a good balance.
Thanks, Paula. Anyone else, counsel? Motion to approve TCA 2501 as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Cliff.
I'd like to thank Paula for taking an interest.
Yeah, me, too.
In the property.
And I don't know, well, thank you, but Cliff has been wonderful in this. And I don't know if anybody's gone by to see some of the improvements, but we are planning, for lack of a better word, sort of an open house in the spring after we get the sign erected and the planting's done. The road has been paved, the Eagle Scouts are intending on cleaning it up, the individual grave sites this spring. So we'd like to have people come and take a look. And we've also replaced all the benches. So it's really becoming kind of a charming spot.
All right, next on our agenda is number 11, Council Rules of Procedure Amendment. It's on page 39. Cliff, I'll call on you.
Kind of along those same lines of looking at rules of procedure, as we were in the ordinance, looking at things that maybe didn't match, or needed to be cleaned up, or weren't written quite right. On page, it's section 17 of your.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Yeah, page 46, section 17. It reads, "The council shall provide two periods for public comment at regular meetings consistent with the North Carolina General Statute 16881 dot one." That is not correct. That the general statute requires one public comment, and so we're asking you all to be consistent with that and amend the rules of procedure to mirror the general statute and have one public comment at the beginning.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Discussion?
I think we're the only town that allows two comment periods up and down the beach. So be consistent with the state statute.
If we can be consistent, we should at least try. Tonight, we've had a bit of a roller coaster ride with that, but let's give it a go with this one, okay? Can I have a?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the amendment.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Rules of procedure have now been amended. All right, the last one is number 12, Lease and Resolution, on page 50 of your packet. Counsel, Cliff, you're on again.
One thing about the general statutes is, we can't do anything unless the General Assembly puts it in a general statute for us to do. And this next one spells that out pretty clearly. As you know, the town's been renting space to the SSCA and the CPOA since at least 1995 here in the Pitt Center. And as we've talked about, our needs and growing and expanding and needing more storage, it made sense to us that we would move those two organizations to 13 Skyline, as it's kind of sat empty since we bought it. And then we could use the space here. It'd be more convenient for bringing customers or, you know, staff to come over here than it would be 13 Skyline. And so, you know, we can move the files, there's office space, there's opportunity there. And so in order to do that, we have to get the council to pass a resolution that authorizes the manager to enter into lease agreements for a period of one year. There's a statute for every, you know, if you sell property, if you lease property, and if you give it to public, a 501(c)(3). But this allows us to enter into, and that's kind of what we've been doing since 95. There's a lease that we renew annually. And so this resolution will let me work with the attorneys to get that lease in place. And I expect about two months from now, we'll start making the move.
Okay. Any questions for Cliff?
Do they pay any rent?
They pay $100 a month.
I see they're going to pay for utilities.
They're going to split. We talked about that, and the easiest, probably the easiest way is for us just to split that bill monthly and add it.
Okay.
Half and half.
They weren't paying utilities here before.
No, sir.
And both of these groups are okay about moving over there?
Yes. Yes. One of my things is kind of exciting.
Nice space for them.
Me, too. I think it's an upgrade.
Well, I think it also encourages members of the community to visit that building.
And be in it.
Yeah. I think it's a good use.
Who got the living room? Shared.
Shared.
Good.
And the kitchen. Shared. So counsel, a motion to approve the attached resolutions 2025-0202 and 0203.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. General public comment, does anyone want to speak to us? No? You're all spoken out. Okay. Counsel, business, let's, we'll do individual things, but let's do the discussion about a retreat in March. And I don't know about you guys, but it seems to me that we have five most challenging calendars to sync up with. So I was thinking, since we're definitely going to be together on March the 4th, perhaps that would make sense to put a retreat the earlier part of that day? Or is that not a good idea?
That's not, that's okay with me.
Okay with Rob? Now, the other idea would be, you know, the, two weeks later, you know, the mid-month. But we've been not really doing much in terms of mid-months, because our calendars are so challenging, and we haven't had the business to justify it. So. Or we could do it the day after, counsel, on the 4th. There's Wednesday the 5th, if you're not leaving town.
I can do either day. Nobody's interested.
Nobody cares. I only care about these guys, because staff is sort of available. So what do y'all think?
What do we say?
What day?
Either March the 4th or March the 5th?
Yeah, either one.
Either one.
Can we do the 5th?
You want to do the 5th?
Yeah, I hate to say this, but I'll be in, I'll go to Junior Beach for that appointment.
Okay.
The morning of March the 4th.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So March the 5th, what do we usually do retreats at? 10:00 AM? 9:00 AM?
Nine.
9:00 AM to 2:00 PM? Or thereabouts?
Yes.
Or whenever we finish, or whenever we get tired of each other? Okay, so 9:00 AM on March 5th? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay? All right, now, counsel comments. Rob?
Current TV has a meeting, fully attended. Lot of video work going on within the county. For the first time, one of the commissioners, Mike Burris, one of the new commissioners, attended as a representative from the county, looking forward to working with us. I've also talked with the mayor and with the town manager, Cliff. I've been assigned to the Project 250. And Project 250 is, in essence, a celebration, a celebration of the United States 250 years. And chatting with the folks there, there's a lot of synergy with what Project 250 wants to do and what Current TV can do. So we're figuring that out. There's a, the state has, on Project 250, they have designated a whole host of restrictions of what we can and cannot do. But there's also two grants that have been applied for, one for $5,000, and another one for another thousand that is going to support that. But there's even, you know, logos that are going to be official logos and so on and so forth. So the, I don't know where we are in our budget for spending our $5,000. But certain towns, and if they want to buy equipment, you can only buy either AV equipment of some sort, or, you know, acoustics for this room, or whatever. You can only spend up to $5,000 every four years. So in consideration of our planning, long-term planning, if we need any equipment, we'll only be able to spend that 5K every four years. Otherwise, we have to produce video content. The one good thing is they upgraded all of their, in essence, Wi-Fi, and I don't know whether they have ripple fiber or whatever else, but a lot of the videos that were shown on Current TV, they buffer. And it was very, it was terrible in terms of, you know, public-facing website to go and look at something, and then all of a sudden, you get, you know, 30 seconds into it and buffers, and then it goes again. So that's been taken care of. So that's, we're going to have another meeting coming up soon, and, but you'll see more synergies, I think, between Project 250 and what's going on on Current TV.
Very good. Matt?
I have to send out an invite and schedule the February meeting for the Entry Corridor Committee, which hopefully we'll have that proposed next week, at the beginning of the week. And my brain's not working very well, but there was something, oh, Our State, Our Homes. I've been part of the Dare County team to go participate in Our State, Our Homes with UNC Chapel Hill. It's a housing initiative with 18 partner teams, or 20 partner teams, or something like that across the state. Pretty exciting. Our first meeting's February 18th in Chapel Hill.
Nice. Paula?
Let's see. On January 22nd, I attended a Zoom meeting for the Abremoral Rural Planning Organization. Wes was on the same meeting. And that's a review and input into legislative priorities for the northeastern counties in North Carolina. We also received a pretty comprehensive update from NC DOT about projects in all these counties, including Dare County. The one, I guess, that was of most interest to us was progress on the Mid-Currituck Bridge. And of course, they lost $425 million in federal funding for the bridge, which was a big blow. But according to NC DOT, they are continuing on the permitting and the regular steps in the process, and they're pursuing other streams of funding. So it's not anything more substantive than that.
Very good. Thank you.
And I'll just.
Thank you and Wes for going to.
And Wes asked the question about the Mid-Currituck Bridge, which I appreciate him doing.
Mark?
Tour Board, we had our meeting this month, and this is February, January, I'm sorry, we had our January meeting. Year-to-date, occupancy is down almost 5%. And December did not come through strong at all. That was just in November. Year-to-date, though, meals are up 1%, so people are eating out more, which is kind of encouraging. There's a lot of good, positive things going on. But, you know, the fiscal year runs through June, just like it is for the town here. And I'd be less than honest, there wasn't concern about what this coming year is going to bring in rentals. I mean, if you see some of the ads out there, there's some rental companies already offering discounts. The bookings aren't as strong as they've been in the past. Everybody thought this would be a settling year, but they're already offering discounts during the high season, you know, which is July and August and late June, which is kind of troubling. And the number one New Year's resolution in the United States was citizens tightening their belt. Who knows what that's going to bring? Okay? You just don't know. It wasn't losing weight. So, so it wasn't losing weight. It was tightening their belt. So who knows where the economy is going to go? But we're hopeful. We budgeted successfully, and Tour Board is also doing a lot of extra digital advertising is what we're planning. Believe it or not, TikTok is the number one place where people look to find things out about the Outer Banks. It's unbelievable. It's knocking everybody out of the ballpark. The last thing is, is that there's a series of videos out there called The Outer Edge.
Yes.
I think you've seen them. They are well-done. You haven't seen all six of them? I mean, they are well-done by the Tour Board, and there'll be more coming. Let me put it that way. And they're working with Current TV. It's a big deal.
The issue is, they're doing a lot on the towns.
Yeah.
Southern Shores is not included, and there's a big issue with that, meaning, do we want to stay below the radar? Or do we want to actually encourage Current TV to do a video of the town?
Have you seen all the?
I've seen a couple of the other ones.
Yeah, you haven't seen them all yet. It's in there.
It's in there, okay.
Yeah, it's in there. I've seen all six.
I didn't go to the premiere.
No, you didn't go to the premiere, but it is in there. And they're taking, I can think of, the gentleman we honor tonight for beach grass planting could be a fantastic subject. Beach grass and how it goes up and down. They're looking, they got 30 different ideas right now for the next series.
Oh, cool.
So it's pretty cool. But you've got to remember, this goes all the way to Ocrecote Village, not Ocrecote Village, I'm sorry, Hatter Village, all the way to Duck. So you've got to count, keep the whole county in line there, and that's where we're at. Okay.
Real quick, next council meeting is Tuesday, March the 4th at 5:30. And now we've just scheduled our retreat for the day after. This has been a heavy agenda night, and I appreciate everyone's patience. And thank you all very much. And motion to adjourn?
Do you want subjects for the, for the March 5? Do we send them to you?
Can you, yeah, just send them to me. That'd be good.
All right. Sounds good.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thanks, guys.